That's the first thing that has to happen for this plan to work, then yes, we could temporarily remove the island while the seawalls are being put in, reconfigure it to be as narrow as we can get it so that we have that separation, have the location for our sign, and then put it back. And then finish the paver project and install a reconfigured island at that point. Dave, are you? He's our project guru on this, that's why I'm deferring to him on that. Are you good with that? Okay, then under those circumstances, we'll absolutely work with you on this.
And I'm getting the impression from the maintenance canal folks that that would be also a viable criteria based on the age of this seawall? To do this in 2018?
Kathy Miller, canal maintenance, yes, that wouldn't be a problem. There is one thing that you need to be aware of. When we do come in there, the pedestal and the retaining wall that you have there will be removed by, at your expense. So when we come in to do that work, you'll have to have all that removed as well.
Now, would that normally be the case if you were just on the cycle? That anything that you took that you damaged on our? So it's not a different special condition for us because of this timeline?
Right, right.
Excuse me, Dave Baker again at West Warren Inn. The retaining wall is there for a purpose. Specifically, we don't want people coming out of the facility going into the canal. That's for safety reasons. We'd like to retain a safety wall there to prevent that from happening.
I understand you can replace it when we are completed with our work.
So we'd be able to put it back?
If urban design allows it.
Okay.
Talk about head your bed.
Lisa Hannan with the variance.
Okay.
Okay, so, I mean, I think I'm hearing too, this gives us, if we do move forward with putting the, I think it's smart to put the seawall in the 2018 plan. Because otherwise, you're gonna be spending money, you know, improving your thing, and then we have no idea what's gonna happen there. And you're so close. Too close, you know, so I think that makes a lot of sense. I did like, I liked hearing your idea about the gate. Maybe in that timeframe, you guys could explore some other options with your gate and your sign, and maybe think outside the box a little bit.
Agreed.
And come up with a new configuration that would be even better than what you think you, you know, you think you want now.
Agreed, yeah. And we have not started to research that yet, because that was gonna be after the pavers, we were gonna look at the entrance. So it's a perfect time for all of us to take another look at that overall configuration.
I think that would be a really good idea.
Yes.
Yes.
Speaking of thinking outside the box, my question to Lisa, Lisa? It's not to throw a monkey wrench into the works, but to try to avoid messing things up. Does our code provide a requirement that work pursuant to a variance has to be done within six months of approval?
I'll have to look that up, I don't think so.
I know some jurisdictions do, I can't remember specifically.
I don't think, I can...
If we can find that out, my recommendation would be that if we were going to adopt or approve the variance with the idea that we were gonna delay until 2018, then we could adopt it, but suggest that it be adopted with an effective date down the road.
One other clarification, Lisa Hannan, for the record. One other clarification, the gates weren't brought up until I just heard about them. That would probably require another variance.
Oh, we, understood, understood. Yeah, and what we're looking at is just a laser beam thing? There's no digging, no pad, no sensors, no keypads or any of that? We understand the variance need, yes.
Gary.
Okay, so I'm a little confused. For the asphalt work that they wanna do, they don't really need a variance, is that correct?
They do not need a variance, and that work is underway right now.
So based on the discussion, the way this has evolved now, why do we even have to discuss the variance for the seawall and the pavers at this point? Because it seems like there's gotta be a lot of more thinking and doing about that in the first place.
Because it's been advertised for the state.
Okay.
Can we allow them, you know?
Well, I think there's...
A reaplication based on?
If the reason for wanting to delay your decision is because there's other information that you need to consider, that's one thing. If the only reason why you want to delay is because of what I suggested might be an issue, that issue could be easily resolved. And I think, I think just for their planning purposes, they would wanna know ahead of time that the variance has been approved.
Okay.
And I was just simply trying to make sure that there would be a way to keep it alive. And I don't know, and Lisa I think is looking now to see whether there's a time limit on our variances. I know that in some jurisdictions, the variance runs with the land and it's never lapsed. In some jurisdictions, you have to begin construction within six months or it expires. So I just wanted to make sure we addressed that ahead of time.
I'm still looking.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
A quick question for Kathy Miller, please. Kathy, are we reasonably positive that we can get the seawall done next year?
Yes.
Okay, that's very important to the whole picture.
And keep in mind that it starts July, right? I mean, the next year...
No, the next work program starts October 1st.
October, okay, okay.
Okay, yeah. But keeping in mind that there's going to be a lot of preparation work for the applicant to do before we get in there. And we can certainly coordinate that effort, that's not a problem.
I think that's really crucial to the big picture. I appreciate that you guys are being really flexible and that you're willing to work with the city and get this all done in the correct sequence of events. I think it'll make everybody happy in the big picture. And we don't have to put specific criteria in our approval process by having it done this way. It makes much more sense.
It makes a lot of sense.
Much more sense to me.
Yeah, I agree. Let me, can I ask just a clarifying question? So your new fiscal starts in October?
Yes.
Given the fact that we would be, you know, working in the area of the entrance, we can work together, but we'd wanna do this when we have the least number of residents there. We only have about 20% full-time residents. So, you know, if we could get in on either first in October or then wait till June, you know, next year, we'd have to work on the timing. Because if the year starts in October, we don't wanna do it in January and tear up the entrance when we have 63 units full.
I appreciate that, and we can consider that. I highly recommend that we probably do the work in July in the summer months.
That'd be great.
That'd probably be best. That way it'll give you time to modify your entryway for us to get in there.
Yeah, okay, perfect, thank you.
Nancy.
Yeah, that would give them also time to examine other types of gates and things like you suggested, Rachel, which I think is just a positive for all of us. And I appreciate Mark's weighing in on the fact that we would need to eliminate the island for safety while this construction's going on anyway. So it takes care of a lot of issues.
Good. Love it when it comes together, right?
Yeah, love it when a plan comes together.
Okay, Lisa Hannan, under the granting of a variance under conditions, the city council may prescribe appropriate conditions and safeguards in conformity with the zoning regulations, including but not limited to reasonable time limits within which the action for which the variance is required shall be begun or completed or both.
Thank you.
Okay, so, do we have any other testimony? This is a public hearing, quasi-judicial, anybody else wanna speak? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Seeing none.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. So what do you feel comfortable with as far as all the conditions? I mean, do we... What kind of language should we, you know, do we need to include?
If I had my druthers, okay? I would request that you continue, not necessarily, not the public hearing, but the deliberation until the next city council meeting. Allow the staff to get with Colony Point, and we'll come up with the appropriate conditions so that everything gets coordinated.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Yes, we're not rushing this. I shall move.
Okay, so we are continuing the deliberations. The public hearing has been closed until the next city council meeting where we will have an amended staff report.
That would include the recommendations, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And it would not be a continued public hearing, so we won't need to advertise. It will be just a deliberation that will be continued.
And Gary made that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, and we have two seconds. So, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. So you're gonna have to come back June, oh, sorry. June 7th. June 7th? June 7th. Hope you didn't have vacation plans.
Yep.
All right, let's take a quick break, 11 o'clock, 10 minutes. What was that alarm? Speaking of the meeting. Okay, next, we're moving into the ordinance resolution. No public hearings required, but we do allow citizens' comments. So if you would like to speak on GA 01-17, GA 03-17, now would be the time. Would you like, anybody like to speak on either one of those? Make your way to this podium, state your name, you have three minutes. Seeing none, we will move into GA 01-17.
Yes, and this is the second reading of an ordinance that I'll read by title only. An ordinance relating to the provision of services, facilities, programs, and local improvements in the city of Puntagorda, Florida, authorizing the imposition and collection of assessments against property within the incorporated area of the city of Puntagorda, providing certain definitions and defining the terms assessment, special assessment, and capital assessment, providing for the creation of assessment areas, establishing the procedures for imposing assessments, establishing procedures for notice and adoption of assessment rolls, providing that assessments constitute a lien on assessed property upon adoption of the assessment roll, providing that the lien for an assessment collected pursuant to sections 197.3632 and 197.3635 Florida statutes upon perfection shall attach to the property on the prior January 1st. The lien date for ad valorem taxes, providing that a perfected lien shall be equal in rank and dignity with the liens of all state, county, district, and municipal taxes and assessments, and superior in dignity to all other prior liens, mortgages, titles, and claims, authorizing exemptions and hardship assistance, providing procedures for collection of assessments, providing a mechanism for the imposition of assessments on government property, authorizing the issuance of obligations secured by assessments, and providing for the terms thereof, providing that the city's taxing power shall not be pledged, providing remedies deeming that pledged revenues shall be considered trust funds, providing for the refunding of obligations, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Any changes, questions? Nope? Motion?
Move approval of GA-01-17.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the second reading of GA 01-17. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Next is GA-08-7, no, excuse me, 03-17, which is the second reading of an ordinance that I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the city of Puntagorda, Florida, amending chapter 15 ordinances and miscellaneous provisions, adding a new section 15-48, control of access to city-owned, controlled, and leased property, providing for recognition that certain areas of city-owned, controlled, and leased property may require regulation of public access to provide for the security and privacy of public visitors, to provide for the security and privacy of city employees and officials, and to minimize potential disruptions to the work of city government. Providing the city manager with the authority to manage public access to city-owned, controlled, and leased property. Providing the city manager with the authority to designate which areas of city-owned, controlled, and leased property are to be considered designated public forum, limited designated public forum and non-public forum. Authorizing the city manager to separate designated public forums from non-public forums. Authorizing the city manager to develop and implement procedures to regulate and control public access to city-owned, controlled, and leased property. Prohibiting the unconsented recording of video and audio within city-owned, controlled, and leased property, except during public meetings. Providing for enforcement, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Any comments?
Move approval of GA...
We have a motion by Nancy and a second by Gary to approve GA 03-17. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next we have consent agenda. Would anybody like to pull anything off the consent agenda?
I have one thing, only because I have one quick question, number D2.
Do you wanna pull it?
I don't know if we need to pull it, I just have a quick question about it.
All right, well, let's take citizens' comments, and then we'll take your question. Citizens' comments on consent agenda items. Anybody wanna speak on the consent agenda? Now would be the time. Okay, seeing none, we'll take your question.
Just a quick question to say, do we need more than one sign in the community garden? I just have a question, is there more than one access point that could be a problem?
For the record, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design, they have asked for only one sign at the front of the garden where the control seems to be needed most. To get to the other entrance is usually very difficult. It's for the vehicles to get in. They, if you would like, we could tell them they could put two, one on each of those gates. But this one would go right in the front where people are coming in from on Sundays or just entering into the garden at that opening.
I would rather be proactive than reactive.
Okay.
Okay, so what do we need to do with that? Do we need to amend it?
No, just say, if you approve the sign itself, we'll put two up.
Okay. All right, so can we include that in the motion for the approval of the consent agenda? Or do we need to separate it out?
Well, you can separate it out, and then...
Okay, so let's have a motion on the consent agenda without D2.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus D2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. So D2. Make a motion.
I would make a motion that we amend the request to put two signs up instead of one.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve D2 with the allocation of two signs. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. I've had a request to move the Veterans Park Phase II Design Concept Conversation forward. Would that be okay with everybody?
Sure, that'd be great.
Yes, okay, thank you. Surprise. Veterans Park Phase II Design Concept. Okay, we'll take a public comment on this item before we let you start. If you would like to speak on the Veterans Park Phase II Design Concept, now would be the time. Make your way to the podium, state your name, you have three minutes.
Fine, my name is Frank Mazur from the Mural Society. We reviewed the plan, and we certainly concur with it. We think it's a phenomenal improvement, something the veterans will approve. From the wall standpoint that's designed for the mural, we urge you to put a cap along the freestanding wall. That's very important. We've had some experience with freestanding walls without a cap, particularly with moisture getting down and lifting mural. And any wall that you have there, we suggest to do that. The other item that we are concerned with, that when you see the cost, it does not include the cost of the mural. It's basically for the design for the park. The mural cost is anywhere from $50 to $25 to $50 a square foot. If it's more detail, it's a lot more than that. And what's not included in that figure is the perpetual care required for the mural. The other item, which is my own personal one, which I would like to suggest, is that there are a lot of pavers there. And I think that the park means an awful lot to the veterans. It's a memorial facility, and I would ask you to work with the veterans to see whether they'd like to have a memorial garden at that facility, particularly along the honor path. But I commend the staff, I commend the city for the design they put together for the wall. I think it's a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm Dick Carr, president of the Vietnam War Southwest Florida. I've been working with urban design the whole way in this project. And I think that Mitchell, I would commend him. He came up with a beautiful plan that will make the rest of the park look fantastic and also be very functional for many, many things, including perhaps concerts and whatnot. And I highly endorse the plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Arthur McGinnis. I'm the commander of the Purple Heart Chapter here in Charlotte County. And I was presented, I was able to see the presentation of this part of the park yesterday. And I endorse General Carr's comments. It really looks nice. With the limited options that we had, I think he's done a wonderful job in giving respect to the plaza. My one request is that of the 14 parking places that are in the plan, that one of them be considered for a Purple Heart Reserve sign. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the Veterans Park Phase II proposal? Okay.
For the record, Mitchell Austin, Urban Design. City staff has been working for many years with the various veterans groups and other concerned citizens, residents of the area regarding Veterans Park. And this is really a product of that collaborative effort. Pre-construction Veterans Park aerial, this is what was there. Phase one, of course, is the completed Southwest Florida Vietnam Memorial Wall. That portion of the park is very beautiful. It's an extremely contemplative, respectful, honorable place. Unfortunately, the front of the park was not part of that project, and it's seen better days.
It's an award-winning project.
Yes, that is an award-winning project as well.
This part is not.
This part is not an award-winning project. Yet.
Yet.
So the Phase II proposal really looks at the front half of the park along Reta and Nesbit Street, all the way up to the gazebo and the pond area. Challenge-wise, we know there are a lot of challenges with the site. There's a lot of existing memorial, pavers, plaques, and other paraphernalia that needs to be accommodated in any new park design because those items have been donated and memorialize people and remember folks, and they're very important. We know that there are a lot of ceremonies that occur in the park. However, there's not really necessarily a good place for those ceremonial areas to occur. So we need to accommodate those. We need to improve ADA access to the site. Currently, the site meets the minimal requirements, but given the nature of the use of this park, it should exceed those requirements. Parking, we need to provide more, better, logical parking for the site. We need to adequately light the site. The site does see a lot of utilization in the evening hours. So it is used in those hours, and we need to accommodate lighting and make sure that it is appropriate, safe, and respectful of the environment. We also know that we need to recognize the donors that have contributed in a way that recognizes them but does not detract from the overall purpose of the park, of recognizing our veterans. Opportunity-wise, this is an amazing location. It has great existing park features, not only the newly completed wall, but the gazebo, the pond, the fountain. There's also some great landscaping, pretty mature landscaping for the purposes of our parks already in place. And we have a tremendous network of partners within the community that are heavily invested in this park. So the conceptual plan for the front half of the park is really, in my mind, three parts. The first part is a main ceremonial plaza focused on the gazebo, an honor walk running along the western edge of the pond, between Nesbit Street and the pond. And then the streetscape along Reta and Nesbit. That's really the gateway into the park. So moving from the outside in, we have the streetscape. We're proposing the addition of 14 new parking spaces and the marking of four ADA spaces. There's existing public parking to the south at the corner of Nesbit and Reta, and to the north in Lashley Park. We need to better connect those existing parking facilities to the park. So we're proposing new sidewalks along the two right-of-ways, as well as intersection treatments at the corner of Nesbit and Reta to shorten the pedestrian crossing distances and make that a safer, more accommodating connection. The honor walk area, this is really designed to accommodate mural, memorial plaques, informal seating, to provide some ceremonial spaces, to provide contemplative spaces. So it's really multifunctional. So within that, the first part and most visible part of the honor walk will be the mural wall plaza. The plaza itself is the largest. It provides a ceremonial space that is sort of secondary to the main gazebo ceremonial space. The mural wall itself is not just a place to put a mural, it is actually functional. This is a photograph of the area as it exists now. We have some utilities and other various and sundry items right in this location that are not the most attractive things in the world, but are required to be there. So the wall itself will hide that from the public view. Due to the mature landscaping, we're not creating any safety issue because you can't see from the street through into the park anyway in that location. So it really, from a design perspective, it has no negatives, it's all positive.
What does the gold color right there represent?
The color is just, I needed to make it stand out against the background. It's just blank.
No, on the ground, what does the gold represent?
Oh, the gold on the ground, that is the actual area that would be paved. The white would be concrete.
Sidewalk?
Yes. We want to provide, even though pavers are, can be an ADA surface, they can lift and raise, so we wanna provide a path if you're not actually in the plaza so you have a cleaner, clearer path for wheelchair, otherwise mobility impaired folks.
Okay.
The next area along the honor walk is the Purple Heart Memorial Plaza. And again, this area is a little bit more secluded from the street, which was important to the Purple Heart group. They wanted to provide a little bit of a contemplative space that was semi-private and quiet, which this location accommodates. It also is highly visible within the park, though, because it is along honor walk. It also overlooks the existing pond. So it is quite a beautiful location. So as it exists now, this is the area. The proposal would add a wall, which would be five feet or possibly higher, that would screen out the sort of utility and landscaping that's in the background. The memorial itself would exist within that space. The plaza area in front of it would be able to accommodate the existing memorial pavers associated with the Purple Heart Memorial. There is also a lower seating wall adjacent to that, and that is to provide informal seating, so if you don't bring a chair, much like we have in Hector House Plaza. It also provides a little bit of a deterrent from people walking across through the landscaping, so it directs the pedestrian to the proper entrance and exit to the park facility. so it, it directs the pedestrian to the proper entrance and exit to the park facility. There are some other smaller plaza and wall areas that occur along the honor walk that would accommodate additional memorial pavers, plaques. We have a number, a large number of bronze plaques that are currently on pedestals, so those would be moved conceptually to those, to those higher walls so they could be viewed, and they would be better protected from the elements being on a vertical surface. So, the next piece moving, major piece moving up is Donors Plaza. I wanted to give the, the donor recognition a specific, easily identifiable space that was tucked away from the rest of the memorial areas of the park. Currently, the location is, is a garden, it's got mature landscaping, shade trees. And the addition would be a plaza, pedestals for donor recognition, and also paved areas for donor recognition. The column shown here would be a location to put the, to specify that it was a Donors Plaza and, and recognizing the fact that it's different from the rest of the memorial areas of the park.
Are tho, would those be the existing, the monuments that are there now or additional new ones? Would you move the ones that are there now, or would you?
In, in terms of the Donors Plaza, this would be, the pedestals are intended to accommodate the donor recognition for the Vietnam Memorial Wall.
Okay.
The paver areas would, in my mind, be for any donations relative to this Phase Two proposal. And then, again, the, the column would be designating that it was donor recognition in this area.
Because there's also one there for the fountain, would that move down?
Uh, I think the one for the fountain location, because it's there, probably just keep it there.
Okay.
Cause with, it identifies the Freedom Fountain. So, without that identification, you're kind of like, okay, well, that's nice, why is that there? So, the third major piece of the puzzle is the gazebo ceremonial plaza. And the gazebo itself is a natural stage. It's used that way in many of the ceremonies that occur in the park now and historically. The audience area is, is not so inviting because it's limited to essentially a walkway and, and a, and a small plaza. So, this would be an expansion of that into a full plaza area, providing a good audience viewing area. The space would be defined towards the street by a low seating wall, and that helps define the space and provides that informal seating if people aren't bringing chairs to an event. It gives them a place to rest. Landscaping-wise, we do have a substantial green space here, which would be an area where we could, we would propose additional shade trees, which would shade the plaza in the late afternoon and early evening from the sun, so that would be beneficial. So, as it looks today, and roughly, conceptually, as it would look under this proposal, just cleaning up that, that appearance, really focusing on the gazebo as the stage. Now that I've walked you through the basics of the conceptual design, comes the hard part. The initial estimate of cost that you see here is $450,000. This is based on our concept plan, working with, with Public Works Engineering to develop construction cost estimate. We would, assuming that we proceed with the project, we would, we would be developing construction documents, and from that, we would have a better idea of what the final That's all I have for my presentation. Questions?
Would you be taking any trees? Everything would stay, right?
Uh, there is one existing tree that needs to be removed, as well as several existing sable palms.
That need to go?
Yes.
Either way?
Either way.
Okay. Nancy?
Um, I have several questions. One is, I'm assuming that the, the walk will be intended to be non-bicycle friendly? I know that the, the, we, we do not permit bicycles down by the Vietnam Wall, but I've had people raise the question of, do we allow bicycles on the rest of this? And the question that came up, at least we should provide some bicycle racks by the Vietnam Wall because there aren't any?
Yes.
So, if, if we intend, I like the idea of having a sidewalk along the street. If we intend to make the walk reflective and we don't want bicycles coming through there, then even more, an idea where, that we should have bicycle racks in a couple of, two or three spots to make it easy for someone to bicycle there and, and park their bicycle.
And certainly, that, that is, that is something that we've looked at and called attention, draw attention to that in my presentation, but the proposal would include at least two locations for bicycle racks within the park, both at, at sort of either, at far end of the existing memorial wall. And the, trying to see if I can get a cursor. So, one location would be there, the other location would be sort of tucked into the, to the landscaping at the far edge over here towards Lashley. We could potentially look at adding them into the, to the right-of-way. We kind of don't want to draw attention to clutter up the site, obviously.
I understand.
So, so we need to be careful about where we put them. As far as prohibiting bicycles or rollerblades or any of those other items, those would need to be an ordinance change to Chapter Six of, of the City Code of Ordinances, which governs park regulations.
Well, if there are bicycle racks there, that might encourage people to use them.
Yes, certainly.
Uh, the other thing I've noticed, I guess, two more things. I've noticed that the times we use the gazebo, everyone's sitting in the sun.
Mm-hmm.
And did you give consideration to some kind of shade structure over that area, similar to the shade structure we have at the Interactive Fountain, so that there's, people can sit in some shade? Cause we're, if we plant some trees there, it's going to be a long time before there's any shade available. And I know people tend to congregate underneath the tree that's there.
Yes.
Because they just want shade.
Yes. And as far as the, the largest of the existing oak trees on site, it is retained in this proposal.
Mm-hmm.
The secondary plaza area along the, the mural wall, that tree provides shade to that location pretty much all morning. So, if you're having a morning ceremony, that would probably be the best location. And then, in the afternoon, it would be later in the evening before you would, you know, depending on the time of year, sun angles before the, the shading would cover the, the gazebo plaza area.
Yeah, I'm, I'm specifically referring to the gazebo plaza area, so that there's some shade structures there for people to...
Yeah. Well, if we plant shade structures, then we can't plant trees because we can't have both. And then, you would also be hiding the gazebo, which is a very beautiful set piece for the park, focal point for the park.
Well, I just am very much in favor of shade structures. People, we need that. And the, another question, I've had someone raise a conversation about, the Pinnacle Garden Club has, over the years, provided a considerable amount of money and time and talent to providing gardens here within what is the Veterans Park. Is there any plan in working with them on restoring any of these and providing water irrigation and things like that to this so that they...
Yeah, th, those discussions have taken place. Essentially, they've been put on hold since the, just prior to the construction of the, of the wall, so.
And I guess I, I would say that since we tore down the wall with the mural on it, that I, it seemed like we should give consideration to helping fund putting a mural back up. So, those are my comments.
Other questions?
And it's an outstanding plan. I really love it. It's, I've been looking forward to this for a long time.
Yeah, thank you.
I think it really enhances the area, and, I mean, we've all agreed since the wall was done, we can't get to it fast enough. Unfortunately, it's unfunded, but when do we need to have that discussion?
If, if the city attorney and the attorneys for Fishville come to some agreement, we will be bringing back to you an item regarding use of the special use fund.
Okay.
They're getting...
Well, the city attorney does not think that there's a settlement on the horizon, and we filed our briefs, the city has, and we're, I think the, the brief from Fish, from the challengers is forthcoming, so it will depend on how long it will take for the court to resolve that.
So, it'll be a little while.
Anytime in between, we might hear back from the challengers making a reasonable proposal, but I'm not, there's nothing, nothing being discussed at the present time.
And the reason I say that is the first priority for use of the other funds in the special use fund is Ponce Park. We sort of made that decision a while ago, so we need to preserve some money for Ponce Park. But there'll be money to do this once that Fishville thing gets resolved.
That sounds like a good plan.
Very good plan.
Yep. And then, would we, I mean, we're not looking to do the engineering and stuff in-house, or what would, how would we be handling all that? It's quite a big project.
Uh, it is quite a big project. I do, I have been working with Public Works Engineering on this, on this project. The, the concept plan is, is already in CAD. I know that Public Works Engineering has done a lot of work in terms of identifying the existing grades and proposed grades. So, I'm not an engineer, but I would think they've already done a, a lot of the heavy lifting, so they may be able to produce the construction documents in-house. That would, that would definitely be a, a conversation to have that we have not had to this point because we, we need a direction from City Council on how to proceed.
I think we can keep it moving, then, when the funds become available, we build it.
This is good. So, if Public Works cannot do the work in-house, and they may not be able to, there's a lot of stuff on our plate, do you want us to...
There he is.
Magically appears.
Wide-eyed, bushy-tailed.
We can handle the design in-house on the park. We've done so much work there now that we, it'd be a problem to have, to work with a consultant on it. We'll do it ourselves.
Nice. Good answer. Thank you.
Mark, Mark Gearing, our city engineer, just said he's going to handle it in-house.
Good. So, I say keep it moving.
We'll keep it moving.
Yes.
Okay.
And you know, that, it's not just being used by veterans. I mean, this park is being used by a lot of other citizens, and school classes are coming here because it's now part of history, and they're, all the history classes from the schools are, are coming by busloads and learning about the, the history of this, this whole horrible war that we had. But I've seen wedding ceremonies in the gazebo, I've seen all kinds of other things going on. It'll really, really pull the park together and, and make it a beautiful place that we can, we can be proud of.
A lot of people use it.
Is that parking parallel or pull-in?
Uh, there, there are two different configurations here. There's, there's head-in parking along East Reta. It's designated as East Reta on this map, but it, that's actually on the Justice Center site, so we've been working with the county to gain that access and permit that parking. On Nesbit Street, there's existing parallel parking. The only modification that staff proposes is that we designate and proper, and make sure that the grades and everything are correct for two accessible parking spaces. And then, the addition of what's called the curb bulb, and that's a, an area of extended sidewalk to shorten the pedestrian crossing distance and to protect the parallel parking from vehicular intrusion.
Yes.
Is, because this is right by the Veterans Park, is this a time when we could discuss eliminating a parking space right in front of the Harbor Walk condo drive, so that there's visibility by the Harbor Walk condo residents when they're trying to come out onto Nesbit, they can see the oncoming traffic? That's been mentioned by one of the residents who lives there.
Yes, I've heard the same.
And so, I didn't know if this would be a time to just throw that into the mix?
Certainly, that would...
Similar to where we've done that in other spaces around the city?
Certainly, yes.
And certainly look at designating one for the Purple Heart program, whichever is most appropriate.
Do we want to also say for a Vietnam veteran, or not, you know, well, different kinds of designations, not just the Purple Heart, but there's, you know, other, I think over at the Public Safety Complex, we actually have them just for veterans. So, I don't know what would be, what the preference would be, but I think it would be nice to do.
Staff can explore that with the, with the veterans groups and see what they would, would like to see. And we could designate those spaces either in the 90-degree or along the Nesbit Street, depending on their preference.
I would like to say, since we're going to use, what are you calling the funds?
Special use.
The special use funds. How the rest of the council members feel about also including the cost of the mural in with it is because we, we tore down a mural that the, had been paid for by the murals.
I would be okay with a portion, but 100% without even knowing what that number is is hard to commit to. But I would, I would be okay with a portion.
I mean, I, the way I see it is, it's not a new mural. If we were creating a space for a new mural and asking them to help, it might be a different conversation, but since we're replacing a mural, I just feel like they work so hard to fundraise to put up the murals that we have, that I think, you know, at least half would be, I know they would probably appreciate it, but I could support fully.
Gary?
Just throwing this out, that based on a little bit of information that was there, we're looking at about 250 square feet of mural. I think the gentleman was saying it could be from 50 on up, you know, so we're looking at somewhere around, probably if we said $100 per square foot, we're looking at $25,000 approximately for a mural.
Kelly's coming to the mic.
Hi, Kelly Gaylord, President of the Mural Society. We would, and you're absolutely right, to try to guess on the cost of the mural is kind of crazy. So, we'd be interested, and we've already have a committee working with Dick and, and others to start figuring out a design of it. We were just waiting for the size and structure of it. So, now that we have that, I'd like to suggest that we start that design work and figure out what, some, some alternatives that would also come along with a price tag, and we can bring that back.
Perfect. Yes. Excellent.
So, we should approve that separately at another time, then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's just for discussion, I think.
I, I don't have a problem putting money toward it, as long as it's within, within a, a normal scope of...
Neither do I.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
And of course, if they want a cap on the wall, you heard that, so let's...
I think that's a reason, that's, I think that's a meaningful discussion we should have in the future. I'm open to it.
There's one other, there's one other thing that I, I heard in a conversation, a suggestion, and that was, and I don't believe it was clear, but I think that Mr. Mazur was suggesting someplace, if I'm correct in understanding, someplace for veterans to put their ashes.
Memorial gardens.
So, you called it a memorial garden, and I'm not familiar with, I mean, I'm familiar with columbariums, where we, but to, so I think, were you all clear on that? So, I think that...
Do we currently have that situation there?
Uh, if we do, it, it's informal. Basically, the memorial garden is a place to, to essentially to scatter ashes, a formalized place to scatter ashes, so you're not storing urns or vessels or individual. So, i, it's different from the, and it's certainly something that we can look into and explore where a possible location is, work with the, the concerned citizens, and see if we, we want to include that with a proposal. include that with a proposal. So bring that back to city councils, to see whether or not you want to include that. But it seems like a worthwhile endeavor, based on the little bit of research we've done from the time it was presented until now.
Gary?
I think would be a very sweet way to go. I mean, I've been involved in several ash spreadings in the harbor, from, you know, people that are avid, were ex-mavy and boat, and so forth, and it's a very spiritual event. And with the way this project has developed, and it's continued to develop, I think this is just something that just fits just naturally into it, for any families who would like to partake in it. I'd say in my ten cents.
I would like more information, and bring it back.
Yeah, I think we have to find out what the legal ramifications of that are, because there may be some. I mean, I'm not saying no, but I would, yeah, I agree, more information.
Yeah. And where would be an appropriate place to do something like that as well?
Okay, you have your direction?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, back on to the regular agenda, we're going to go to citizens' comments on regular agenda items only, which is going to include the agreement of the award to Brance Diversified for the dredging of BSI, the Traboo Woods Fresh Market and Garden, the renovation of city council chambers, the Phase Two for the Boca Grand Drainage Improvements, domesticated versus non-domesticated animals in residential districts, and the FPL Solar Now program. If you'd like to speak on any one of those items, now would be your time. State your name, you have three minutes.
Reverend Ellison Haddock, Vice President of Traboo Woods United Association. Actually, I want to speak on two items, and I'm not going to take three minutes on each one, but we're eagerly awaiting, Traboo Woods eagerly awaiting and anticipating the resolution and getting started with our, the strugglers with the fresh market project. But of course, we can't do anything until there's site preparation, build-out, or whatever needs to be done. So we've kind of missed the, the planting season for this year, or a major portion of it. And so whenever we can get a commencement date, we'd appreciate it. And like I said, we're eagerly awaiting getting started. The other thing I wanted to kind of speak to was the Florida Power and Light, I don't know if that person is here today, Florida Power and Light Solar Now program, because there was a proposal to put a solar tree in the Baylor Brothers Park. And I was just wondering if it would be possible to do a canopy there, because there's no real shade over the tables, and so it's kind of, you really can't sit out there in the sun and play anything at the tables. It would be nice if that was shaded, and with you planning on doing a tree there, if it were like a canopy, you could, it's, kill two birds with one stone. So I don't know the purpose of the actual tree that you were putting there, per se, I know it's a pilot program, but you could collect the energy from the sun, as well as provide shade for those tables. And I did see Hector Plaza, I think they would probably enjoy, and I can't speak to them, but I think they would enjoy that as well, to be able to sit at the tables under the shade. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Hughes, resident of Burnsthor Isles for the past 15-plus years, but this morning, I'm here to address you as a chair of the Burnsthor Isles Canal Advisory Committee. I'm here to address the item on the budget, in particular, the agreement to award to Brance Diversified Incorporated of Jacksonville, Florida, for the maintenance dredging of the perimeter canal located in Burnsthor Isles. You all have the required background information on this project. The reason I am addressing you is to make it perfectly clear to all residents of Punta Gorda, that the owner, the waterfront property owners within Burnsthor Isles are self-funding this project. No money will come from the city. Working with Mr. Koenig, the Finance Department, Mr. Drury, Ms. Nippenberg, Public Works, Rick Kinni, Mark Garing, Gary Discher, and Catherine Miller, they came up with an assessment methodology that only the waterfront property owners in BSI would be responsible for this funding. All waterfront property owners in BSI have been assessed $110 in the year 2017, and this assessment is scheduled to continue for six years until the project is paid for. I would also like to remind everyone, several years ago, the BSI decided to widen the lock into our canal system. This project was funded from reserves. No city money was used for the widening of this lock project. The May 11 sun editorial spread the cost when it comes to the burden, excuse the pun, does not hold water. If BSI community can find a way to fund its canal system improvements, then I suggest the Bird Section begin to figure out how they will fund their project. Finally, BSI has a subcommittee studying the cost to place our overhead wires underground. This project, if approved, will also be funded by an assessment methodology applicable only to property owners in BSI. If the property owners in BSI can fund their own projects, I cannot imagine there will be support to finance another neighbor's project. Thank you for your time, on behalf of our BSI community. We look forward to your acceptance of this bid, which will allow all boaters, all boat owners, safe passage in the perimeter canal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.